All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. My name is Megan Sathery. I'm with the Lewis County Planning Department, and I want to welcome you to the Planning Commission Public Meeting today. This meeting is taking place in person, streaming live via Zoom, and it is being recorded. Tonight's meeting is election of officers and adoption of the 2024 docket. We will start with a roll call. The following planning commissioners are present in the room. Commissioner Spogen, Russell, Alves, Corbin, and Scootley. The following planning commissioners are present on Zoom. Commissioner Fritsch and Commissioner Foster. With seven commissioners present, we do have a quorum. Gretchen or Corbin, could one of you please let us know that you can hear us and we can hear you?
I can hear you.
Okay. Thank you.
I can hear you.
We're now ready to begin. Chair Spogen?
Thank you. My name is Lori Spogen, and I'd like to call to order the January 9th, 2024 meeting of the Lewis County Planning Commission. We have a new commissioner joining us tonight. So let's do a round of introductions.
I'm Bob Russell. I've been on the Planning Commission for about two years. I live here in Chehalis. I think I represent District Two.
I'm Jeff Scootley from Windlock area, previously on their planning commission.
Jason Alves, I live here in Centralia, and I don't know what else you want to know, but it sounds I like being told what to do as much as possible. It's my favorite thing.
I'm Frank Corbin, and I live down by the Ribeye in unincorporated Lewis County, which is outside of Naperville. And today marks my second full four-year term on the Planning Commission. So, yeah.
Gretchen, you want to introduce yourself?
Sure. My name is Gretchen Fritsch. I'm up in Packwood, representing District Three. And I've been on the Planning Commission for one full year. I filled in for a commissioner that left, and I filled his last term, and then I'm just beginning just now my first official full four-year term.
And Mr. Foster?
Hello, everyone. Corbin Foster. We live off of Jackson Highway and 508, an unincorporated part of the county, represent the county at large. Happy to be here with y'all.
Thank you, and I'm Lori Spogen, District One. And I'm not exactly sure how many terms I've done, but it seems like a lot. Okay. Well, welcome. We appreciate our new member. Prior to tonight, the Commission received the agenda for today, and the agenda is displayed on the screen. I'd like a motion and a second to approve the agenda.
I'd make that motion.
Second.
And let's vote verbally, starting with Bob.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes with seven yes votes.
Also, prior to tonight, we received the meeting notes from the December 12th, 2023 meeting. If there are no corrections to the notes, I'd like to entertain a motion and a second to adopt the minutes as written.
So moved.
Second.
Let's vote.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain from that. I wasn't there, of course.
Very good.
Aye.
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 The motion passes with six yes votes.
Okay, moving on. Are there any members of the public that would like to provide comments tonight? Are there any members on?
We do have one member of the public that is just joining us, so we are now in public comment. Mr. Notch, would you like to provide public comment today? Okay.
Okay, it doesn't sound like we have anybody tonight, so I'm going to turn this over to the staff to facilitate election of officers. Mindy?
And I'm sorry, I see that Mr. Notch has unmuted. I just want to confirm. Would you like to provide public comment?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Commissioner Spogen?
So we elect our officers annually. Per the Planning Commission bylaws, officers include just the chair and the vice chair. Those are only officers. There's no restrictions on the number of times that someone serves during their terms on planning commissions, so it's pretty open. The role of chair is to preside over the Planning Commission meetings. Meetings, of course, are run by Robert's Rules of Order, so it's very important that you're familiar with those and that we follow the rules. The chair is responsible for guiding public comment and oral testimony during the hearings, making sure that we are following the Parents' Fairness Act, particularly with regards to time limits to ensure equal time to address the commissioners. The chair is also responsible for ensuring that all commissioners have equal opportunity to speak and that no one commissioner dominates the discussion, including themselves. I say this because facilitation is very hard. Anybody who does facilitation, I'm sure Lori can speak to this. It is very challenging to facilitate a group of people when you also want to participate in the conversation. Quite a challenge. Role of vice chair is to perform the duties of the chair when the chair is absent. So again, vice chair needs to be familiar with and follow Robert's Rules of Order. So we just follow basic Robert's Rules for procedure. Any questions about the role before we move into nominations and votes? No? Okay. I will entertain a nomination and a second for chair.
Mindy, could I start this out by saying that I would like to step down his chair tonight? And may I nominate? I'd like to nominate Commissioner Corbin as chairman.
Do we have a second?
I would second.
Yep.
Great, so we have a nomination for Commissioner Frank Corbin as chair nominated by Commissioner Spogen and seconded by Commissioner Russell. Do you accept the nomination?
I do, thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Then let's go ahead and vote. So we'll just run down the line again.
Aye.
Again, I'm going to abstain. I don't know the gentleman.
Aye.
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 The motion passes with six yes votes. Okay, and I'll go ahead and take vice chair, and then I'll turn it over to our new chair. Corbin, I'm gonna have to really make my brain do that. Because I've been saying Spogen since I started with you guys, so
You've been correcting me for a long time.
If you called me Spogen, it would be an honor.
I will do my best. Okay, so next I will entertain a motion and a second for vice chair.
Madam Chair, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't nominate Jason.
Second.
Okay, it's been it's been motioned by Commissioner Chair Corbin and seconded by Commissioner Russell to nominate Jason as our vice chair. Do you accept the nomination? You can decline. You looked a little surprised.
No, if that's what you want, I'll be happy to oblige.
Excellent. Let's go ahead and vote, please.
Aye.
I'll pass.
Aye.
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 The motion passes with six yes votes. Great, so Commissioner Alves is now our vice chair. I will turn it over to Commissioner Corbin to take over the meeting. Thank you.
First of all, I'd just like to say thank you to the fellow members of the Planning Commission and for Commissioner Spogen, particularly for the nomination. It's going to be an honor to follow you and a hard act to follow. You've decorated yourself or honored yourself really well in the performance of the duties, and I hope that I can measure up. So, thank you very much. Okay, thank you, Mindy, for conducting the aforementioned business. The next item is the adoption of the 2024 docket. Mindy, would you please provide a description?
Yes, thank you so much. So we'll pull the docket up on the screen so everyone can see it. So just a reminder about our docket. So our docket is just a way for us to look out over the year and see what we expect. In the years where we end up with quasi judicial actions that come in, those are due, the rezones are due by December 31st. So if we had quasi judicial actions, those would be on here. We don't have any this year. But we make sure that you guys know ahead of time what's coming, specifically on those, so that we can review the record and how you receive information on that. As you know, it's pretty strict how we receive information on those. Um, so that's really why we do the docket, and the docket can be updated at any time. It is not a this is what we're doing, period. We can change the docket as we go along. It really is at your mercy, but we will adopt it for 2024, and then as we need to amend it, we will. So the first thing coming up is road naming. Is that the first thing? Uh-oh. I lied. The first thing coming up is the rural housing alternative, which you guys have had a lot on this, right? So you've been receiving a lot of information, presentations, evaluation, blah, blah, blah. You're gonna have one more workshop at your next meeting, and then we would like to move on to a public hearing. I did want to let you guys know here that we're going to be providing an update on rural housing alternatives to the Board of County Commissioners next week. So if you remember, this came out of the Lewis County Strategic Plan, which is something that they put together. Housing was identified as a significant issue. And then after putting the strategic plan together and hosting a housing forum back in December 2021, staff at the wish of the Board of County Commissioners put together the housing initiative, and this is an item that came directly from that. So through the engagement with the public on the strategic plan, through the housing forum, the need for housing diversity is where we came to this particular thing. So we have provided Board of County Commissioner updates, but we haven't done it in a long time because we've been responding to and working through the details as we've been working with you guys. You've brought up a lot of really critical questions and things that we should evaluate, been working through that, and we haven't updated them while we did that work with you guys. So we're at a good moment now to update them. So we're doing it on Tuesday. That's the 16th at 1:00 PM. It's a special session. It's here because it's a special session. They don't do Zoom for those. So if you want to come, please feel free to come again Tuesday, 1:00 PM here in this room. If you can't come, you know, you have a job and you gotta do the whole worky thing. I could absolutely get you a copy of the presentation that we do afterwards. Happy to talk with you too about what questions they raised or anything else. So we can definitely try and get you the information about that, but I wanted to let you know that that's coming up. So rural housing alternative, that's your first big item on the docket. The other one is private road
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Please do.
Is the so you're gonna do an update? Is there other stuff being updated as well with the county commissioners or just the rural housing?
That's a special session just on that particular issue. We'll also quickly let them know about the docket as well, just that there aren't any quasi judicial on it. So they don't have any particular topics to avoid this year. But yeah, the January 16th at 1:00 PM is a special session to update them on the rural housing alternative.
I guess when I saw that on the note, I thought it was interesting that we were doing that before we were gonna give them any signals as to what we thought about it. Does that seem like the right order, or what am I missing there?
So again, we've been updating them while you guys have received it. We just haven't done an update in quite a while while we were doing the industry stakeholder group and responding to your questions. So this is just an update. This is just a here's where we are at this time. It won't include any any particular recommendations because you guys haven't made any yet, so. Oh, yeah, please do.
So Lee Napier, Director of Community Development, so remember that a lot of this work was led by Eric Eisenberg. So as the Housing and Infrastructure Specialist, he worked directly with the commissioners and for the commissioners. So he's been providing updates along the way. He is, I assume you know, he is transitioning on, so this is also part of our successional transition conversation to tell the board that we're where we're going with this. And we do annually meet with the board to talk about dockets. So we thought that it seemed timely to not only talk about the docket, but with the Board of County Commissioners, but just to update them like how we're going to continue to move the work forward that Eric had started.
Yeah, rest assured, we're not trying to preempt anything that you guys will tell
Well, I guess my concern is that that a presentation is made that we're doing this good work, and this is what we're gonna present to you without giving them any indication that there might be people on the board that don't really like it. So that's my concern.
Absolutely, yeah. We will not be giving them any foresight into what they would be receiving from you guys in terms of a recommendation around it. We're just gonna update them on where we are in the process and the next steps going forward. It's a heavy amount of information, as you guys well know because you've read through it, so it's a lot to just talk about, questions and so forth.
Can I ask a question while we're on this?
Sure.
At what point do the communities learn that this is being thought of?
Yeah, so we did an early round of public engagement where Eric and I made the rounds to a number of different groups. Relator Group, OMB, Fire District, the Chiefs Meeting. We did just some talks about this at different things to get initial feedback. Like with Board of County Commissioners, we've sort of been dark with the public while we worked through these really technical issues that you guys have brought up, and then we wanted to get that on the books. So as we move into the next phase, that's when we'll bring the public back in to be able to respond to where we're at now. And of course, their formal is always the public hearing with the Planning Commission, and then the other formal is the public hearing with the Board of County Commissioners. So there's two official formal times to enter your comments in, but we do a lot of more informal discussions with people.
And if I could just add one more, oh, sorry, Chair, go ahead. You know, a lot of time passes between the time the commissioners give us an assignment or we take on a project, like, for example, the periodic update. We're gonna be working on this for two years, so the board will be getting periodic updates about progress. So think about this as like this is kind of a check-in to let the board know that amongst all of the things that are happening in the county, this is still happening. And any feedback that the commissioners have, when the Planning Commission has, when you get ready to make your decision, your deliberations, that is the time to make certain that you're articulating that. So we can capture that, whether it's in the findings, whether it's in the minutes, or whether it's in the letters of transmittal. So there are opportunities for you to share things that you like or things that you have concerns with. So that is not being bypassed at all at this point.
Thank you. And answer to your question as well, all of our meetings are public. So those that have a particular interest in that subject, you know, has been able to listen to all of our discussions thus far, so.
We do have a Planning Commission email list. We have email lists for topics. So comprehensive plan on Alaska SubArea, Packwood SubArea, all kinds of things. We do have a Planning Commission email list that anyone can sign up for, and so they get announcements of every meeting and a link to the agenda, so they know what we're gonna be talking about. And likewise, whenever we're talking about a subject that has a specific email list associated, like when we bring Packwood to you guys, you know, over those times. Not only do we let the Planning Commission know, we would email that specific topic list. So as topics come forward, we make sure that people in those topic lists get the email as well. Always encourage people to sign up for those email lists. It's a good way to keep them included in the process and knowing where we are because it gets complicated pretty fast. The second item is private road naming. So this is a safety thing. We will have a staff report that comes out to provide more about it. I'm not really prepared to speak in depth about it because I'm still working with our internal partners about this, but this is a safety issue regarding making sure that we have clear naming of streets, of private roads in particular going forward. So we will be bringing a staff report on that to you guys quickly too. So that's a, it's actually a really minor edit in the code, I think, but it's a big issue. So there will be quite a bit that comes to you in that staff report, but a small edit. And then, as you will notice, the rest of the docket is comprehensive plan without any specificity. We are working on scoping a meeting with our consultant tomorrow. We should be able to update this with specific topics soon, so it's not just comprehensive plan. We'll be able to tell you what we're actually gonna be talking about every single night as we go through this. But as Lee said, really, the next two years is comprehensive plan. We have a massive amount of work to do, and that work is not just in isolation. It's work we need to do with you and with the Board of County Commissioners. So we're gonna be doing a lot more work session and a lot less hearing as we go around that. So that's sort of the big, big, big stuff. I do have holds for UGA. We don't have any UGA requests, but the cities, we give the cities through the end of April because that way they can do things with their own city council and their own engagement regarding UGAs. So there is a chance that one of the cities would bring UGA this year because we did change the population forecasts in June. But it's more likely because we're all in periodic update that that would come next year. So I'm not really anticipating UGA, but I did keep the hold there just in case those come in. So, and as you know, UGA can sometimes become quasi judicial if it's just one or two properties. So if we get something and it looks like it's actually gonna fall into a quasi judicial instead of a legislative type of situation, I'll let you guys know right away. That is it on docket. Any other questions before I ask you guys to adopt our docket?
Does anything happen in Packwood for us anymore? Are we done with Packwood for a while?
It absolutely does, and there will be some updates. It's now gonna be just under the comprehensive plan periodic update. We're gonna line it up so that when we adopt the development regulations, it's lined up with all the rest of the development regulations that we're adopting. So as I flesh out the topic-specific stuff, Packwood will pop back up again. We'll at least have a couple of updates about it. But the development regulation component, I don't expect to bring back until this time next year. So we've got a piece of work to do. Right now, we're scoping, and we're recruiting for the community advisory group for Phase Two. We told everybody we would open it back up. So we had an advisory group, obviously, for Phase One, and we are now recruiting for Phase Two so that same people can participate, but new people can jump on too. So that's where we're at with Phase Two.
Given that question, then I am wondering about the YMCA. Will there be any further discussion?
I have an update about that.
I thought you might, but I thought that's a great place to put it in. Okay, we'll wait.
Lee just reminded me, I might not have said this. January 2nd, Board of County Commissioners adopted Phase One of the Packwood SubArea Plan. So I am so sorry. I totally, I'm thank you for mentioning that. I totally didn't remember that we hadn't said that to you. January 2nd last week, Board of County Commissioners adopted Phase One of the Packwood SubArea Plan. They made two amendments. So one, they took the STR goals and policies. You had two of them in there. They combined them into one. So that was one change that they made, and the other change is they extended the residential medium to four properties just south of Snyder Road, and that was a property owner request that they entertained. As you can imagine, the vast majority of the testimony was about short-term rentals. I mean, that's the topic, right? And so if I paraphrase Commissioner Brummer, because that's his district, what he said was it was important to honor the advisory committee and the Planning Commission and maintain a short-term rental policy and to have regulation out there, even though there was a lot of pushback against it. So they did combine them up, which I think actually provides us a little bit more flexibility in Phase Two. So that's where we're at. Questions about that?
The plan is online, the new one, the adopted one, and the ordinance will be as soon as they sign it.
All right, so with no further discussion then about the docket, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the 24 docket as approved or as amended. I'm sorry, as presented.
I'd move to adopt the proposed docket for 2024, Commissioner.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to adopt the 2024 docket as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Corbin and Gretchen? Okay, Gretchen? Foster? I'm sorry, Corbin?
Aye.
Okay. And I. Seven, zero. Okay, motion is approved. Sorry, I'll get the hang of this, I promise. So a little bit more formal than other boards I've been on, so, okay. Are there any items from staff for the good of the order? Is this the time when you're gonna talk about YMCA?
We can do, I had absolutely. I had something else to do first, but let's do YMCA first since you brought that up. So it isn't good of the order. So on December 22nd, Thurston County Superior Court signed the final order, and it was a directive for the Board of County Commissioners to approve the rezone. And it included the conditions of approval that were set forth in the SEPA and also allowed us to enter in a condition of approval related to the arsenic in the drinking water. So we were able to put in an additional monitoring and treatment requirement, but that is it. So next week, on January 16th, I should say, we have 30 days to comply. So next week, on January 16th, the board will adopt an ordinance that approves the rezone with those conditions. Last week, on the 2nd, we held, and we being me, Lee, our county manager, Ryan Barrett, and Commissioner Brummer, and prosecuting attorney Barb Russell held a community meeting in Mineral to go over the final order, make sure they understood it, answer any questions they had about it, and make sure they understood that because we're being ordered to do something, we're not taking testimony on Tuesday. There's no way to influence the decision. It's been decided. So that's very unusual. Usually, people have an opportunity to testify, and in this case, we're not doing that. So, yeah, that's it. Any questions about YMCA?
I attended the meeting, and I thought you guys all did an outstanding job, and it could have boiled over, but it didn't. You guys were, you know, were very professional, and I think the community responded well to all that was said, so, great job.
Thank you. The final court order, the ordinance, all of that is on our webpage. So on the Community Development webpage, under rezones, there's only the one rezone because we don't have any others out there. So if you just click on rezones, it's all YMCA. So at the top of it, you can find the information. So if you want to read the final order or you want to read the ordinance, it's all, it's all there. Okay, the other issue that we wanted to do for, this is a little more like fun, I would say, is Lee and I would like to provide a little short 2023 year in review for you guys. And you've got some stuff online. I actually wanted to start with the Community Development's strategic vision. So Megan's gonna pull that up. I believe you guys have copies because you have copies of everything. So for Gretchen and Corbin, we anticipated internet outages were announced for tonight like on purpose, and so we were expecting internet outages. So we printed everything, and then after it was printed, they corrected and said, nope, we're gonna postpone it. So anyway, everybody's got paper copies in-house right now, so it's pretty funny. So I wanted to start with this strategic vision. So our motto in community development is great service daily. It's in that bottom corner. This is our motto, and I have to say, we take it super, super seriously. There's really two big parts to this. One of that is the work that you advise on, right? So we've got the big stuff, the long-range planning stuff, comprehensive planning stuff, development regulation updates. That's a big body of work. You guys get to see all of that because that's what comes to you for advice. It's our commitment. It's my commitment. I hope that I've done a good job of demonstrating that to you guys that when we bring you stuff, it has been well-vetted through the public, that we are leading with engagement because that great service daily means that the public knows what we're doing and has an opportunity to participate, not just at the hearing stage, but all the way through the process. It's a big commitment that we have. And I would say that actually, in fact, a lot of the things that we bring before you are identified by the public, right? So much of what we bring to you isn't an in-house thing that we look to change. It has been identified by the public, and we are responding to that in some way. So that's a big, important, great service daily about listening and responding in this realm. The other work that community development does that you guys don't get to see as much is we process development permits, right? We're the front counter. So we are where people come to obtain their building permits, and we're the people who do the building inspections. So we're with the public all the time. So we're with the public all the time in that portion of our camp. And it is extremely important that they are providing great service daily. And you can, you can see that reflected in our mission and values. This was developed by staff over a number of meetings to really try to explain what we think is important and how we, how we function. So I wanted to share this with you and then turn it over to Lee to talk about process improvement. Because one of the big parts of what we do is try to continually improve processes, particularly in that other camp of work, the development process or the permitting process side.
Thank you again, Lee Napier, Director of Community Development. Any comments about or questions before we move on from our strategic vision that you want to ask before I start in on the next piece?
Well, I'd just like to make one comment on the whole building inspection process. It really is very good. I finished building my house in Barn and we, two years ago, probably now. And the staff is, was just exceptional.
Thank you, I appreciate that. That, hit your, hit your, there you go.
Hit the wrong button. County staff or were you dealing with the municipality? County, okay. I want to make a comment when the time allows on that.
Okay, so then we'll move on to the process improvement. So this, I'm going to kind of repeat something that I shared yesterday with the Board of County Commissioners. And they have hard copies of this. Okay, so maybe we'll scroll through for Gretchen and Corbin. The packet of information. So yesterday I had the chance to update the commissioners on what we've been up to. And so included in the packet is the cover memo introducing it, which we do for all of our commissioner briefings. We do what we call Rita Heads. So giving them a little bit of an overview. And then the next piece that we wanted to share with the commissioners was the Process Improvement Team Charter for 2023. And that talks a little bit about introduction, vision, purpose, guiding principles, who the membership is, what we do, how they do it, the deliverables. And one of the deliverables is that we would report out on our progress. We would track what we've done and we would give a report out. So that's kind of the basics of where we're going to go with this. And then the next few pages are the process improvement, the 2023 annual reports. There's several pages there, I'll come back to that. We also kind of caught up. We had not been doing a good job of capturing our success. So we did start doing what we call process improvement completed changes. So that's our report out from things that we did in 2016 to 2022. And that's the report that I gave the commissioners. So a little bit about the Process Improvement Team. They're a group that formed in 2016. Lori was there. And part of it, we were able to work with Impact Washington. We did what's called a five day report out. We had representation from Community Development, Public Works, and Environmental Health Services. And we were going to look at how we conduct our routine business. Well, our routine business is pretty vast, so we picked one thing. And we picked one thing in which we would try to figure out how to improve the processes. And I'll tell you, we failed. And that's okay, because we came together and we really mapped out all of the things that we do. And that one thing was, how do you process a single family residential permit? And the facilitator really made us, everybody had to think about every single step, put it down, mark it, and try to identify, you know, what were all of the steps? And were there ways in which we could find efficiencies? And were there ways in which we could do better? We had, and so the staff was there. At the time, Matt Mattiosi was the director of the EDC. Reggie Hamilton was present. Greg Lund was present. And so, you know, we really, we picked a really good project. We would come up with this one permit. We would, everything would wrap up into this one permit and it would be wrapped up in a really neat, tight package. And wouldn't that be great? We couldn't make it work and we failed. But you know what? Because of the work that we had done, we failed, but we realized, everybody realized that there was a way to do something better. And so with that, the outcome of that was the master site plan review or the MSR. And so that was one of our successes. And we've continued since 2016 to identify things. The other point that I wanted to make was that in 2016, we also had this charter in which we talked about how we would come together. We had not updated that charter in quite a while. So that's why the team wanted to update the, wanted to update our charter. Because pretty much everybody has turned over since then. There are very few people who are on that original group who were together. And so along the way, new people would join in. And I would tell Megan or Mindy, you know, what was happening? And it was really hard to capture really what was our mission or where were we going? So the team came together and we did a charter. And one of the things about the charter was to measure or remember what we've done. And so that's the heart of this presentation. But before I get into what we did in 2023, does anybody have any questions about our Process Improvement Team?
Did you follow lean six sigma processes or other similar?
Kind of, sorry, kaizen type methods. I, I'm reluctant to say I'm following or practicing any type of thing because I understand that there's coursework and there's certifications. So to honor that work, we borrow from those concepts and we try to apply them. But I wouldn't want to say that that's what we're actively doing because to my knowledge, none of us are formally trained.
Okay.
So out of respect for that practice.
The VA put me through a lot of that and I didn't, you know, complete it because I retired. But it's, it's a great program and, you know, highly recommended. But some of the key words that you were using when you were describing it sounded a lot familiar. So anybody else have any questions for, for Lee?
Yep, I've, obviously, this is a very worthy endeavor. I wonder what measurement are you using to determine whether you are successful or not?
Can you hold that question? And I go through, let me go through some of our accomplishments and then let's come back to that. Because that is sometimes hard to capture. You know, you can't, like, when we started the process, we set a goal. Like you could get something done in a certain amount of time. It's like, is that a good way to measure it? Or is the measurement more about people's understanding and appreciation and relationship? So I think that there's a lot of those things in what we've done. So please remember that question and let's come back to it. Anything else before I go? Okay, so Megan, if you would move on to the actual annual report. Okay, so everybody has a copy in front of them. And again, you know, the purpose of this is to continually improve permitting review and other processes to create efficiencies that add value, reduce time from application submittal to review completion and permit issuance, and improve the customer's experience. So some of those may have numbers and some of those may have something else to quantify the outcome. So again, we had our charter and this is the work product that we wanted to present to capture the work that we're doing. And what I have not mentioned though is kind of how the group goes about it. So the group is committed, they meet every Tuesday. Or excuse me, not every Tuesday, every other Tuesday, no. They meet the second, first and third Tuesday. I'm going to get it right. The group meets the first and third Tuesday of each month. We have, and we do our meetings on teams because some of us are in different locations. And we have invited, you know, members of the public are always welcome. Most people don't find it that interesting except Greg Glenn shows up and he keeps threatening to bring people in, but we keep waiting. So he's keeping all of the fun to himself. And, okay, so some of our, and I'll kind of touch on them. If you have questions, I'll look up if you want to ask a little bit more. Otherwise, I'll just keep going through this list. So online building permit inspection submittals. So you can now submit your building permit inspection online. You can go to our website, you can click there. Now with our permit inspection card, something we learned. We've got the QR code, so you could scan it from your phone. So you could request an inspection without talking to anybody. So you don't have to call and have somebody pick up. Or I don't know why anybody would call the inspection line and listen to all of the instructions because that takes a huge amount of time. You can actually do it by just, you know, dialing in through your computer. And you can request your inspection request, you'll get a confirmation. And then you will know that your inspection request has been received. And we are typically, we are down to one inspector. So you can actually, excuse me, in the morning, the inspector will do the route and you can expect to get your inspection within 24 hours. Something else that we've, an improvement that we made in advance of the on spec, online inspections. Oh, actually, sorry, Megan skipped. So she's showing the, what it looks like. So if you want to know what it looks like to complete it, there it is on the screen. And if people want to know what the inspections are for the day, we also post them. So you don't have to, you can see where you are in terms of order. The next one is one that Mindy was instrumental in. So water system plan reviews. So we receive and review water system plans for different types of water systems. Some involve just environmental services, some involve the county engineer. But what it looked like when I started was that hard copy would come in or you'd get an electronic copy and it came, for some reason, it came to community development. Sometimes it went to environmental services. Sometimes we'd print things out, we'd circulate things around. Where's the copy of the document? Was it checked out from, you know, the, the library? So it's very, it was very unorganized and clunky to track where the document was and who had it for review. So we decided to use our adept permitting system as a way to manage our workflow. And so Mindy had worked with environmental services, their water division, and the county engineer who has a role in it. And figured out with them, how could we receive, route, collect comments, and communicate the status from the point when Department of Health tells us, hey, there's an update to a water system plan, to a water purveyor saying, hey, will you do your local consistency form? So all of those things are now able to be reviewed and routed and coordinated through adept. We still have our library where we keep all of our water system plans. But leading up to that, it's now located in one place for the library and one place for the review. Flood permits. So the community, Lewis County, before I arrived and throughout my tenure, they, they signed up to be and have continued to be in the community rating system or CRS. What that means is that because the Lewis County is in that program and we go through, every five years, we go through a certification in which we are rated in terms of a class. And what that means is depending on what class we're in, there is a reduction in insurance rates to the citizens, the unincorporated citizens of Lewis County. So you get a bit of a reduction. Don't ask me to go any, any further. It's a slight reduction, but with the cost of flood insurance going up, it makes a difference. So we participate in that. And one of the activities that we have is we have to do, we have to make certain that our flood permitting is done correctly and coordinated. So another one of our requirements is that we're, we've talked about, we do. So we do our, we, we get recertified every five years, but annually, we do reportings. And something that's common for community development is to do kind of an after the fact debrief. So we were, we do debriefs and how things are going well, how things went, what went wrong. Well, what went well, what went wrong? And so out of one of our certifications for CRS, at the end of the annual cycle, we did a debrief on the review of flood permits. And it's pretty important that we properly intake, check them, and then transmit them to our CRS coordinator. Because if there's errors, regard, you know, regardless of when we catch them, they have to be correct when they go in for the CRS rating, there's consequences. So it's important that our attention to detail and we do this right. And so that's why that ended up as one of our improvement processes. The next one is the adept online porter, portal. So what that would look like is that a customer could go online and look at the permitting system. This is one of the projects that we think has merit, but it is not advancing at this point for a variety of reasons. Our system is not ready to handle it. The finances probably aren't there for us to make that investment. I don't know that it's an investment that the community would embrace because getting back to the online inspections, as cool as that is, only 20%, 20 to 30% of our customers are using it. So we're having to make the choice about an investment here for an online portal. Are we ready financially? But then the other piece is a recent piece of legislation where the state is going to be looking at the platform for permitting. So there's a chance that the state might be recommending a different platform that we could possibly partner with in term, and then also providing some more guidance in terms of streamlining. So we have put this one on hold because in the next two years, there's going to be more conversation. So rather than making this investment now that financially may not make sense for the county to expend the funds because it may not have a return on investment for our customers, we're going to wait to see how this other item turns out. And then the next one, I'm not going to touch too much on because you guys had it, but campground and RV park code changes. But you may be asking yourself, why is the Process Improvement Team looking at this? Because this is code that we look at. Well, in order for us to effectively bring you code and effectively implement your code, there are people involved, there's a cast of characters who are going to have to implement this. So we do take code, like the periodic update. That's all going to be in development regulations are all going to be on the Process Improvement Team's calendar because we want to make certain that we've vetted things that are coming to you. And when you approve things, that they're being passed back down to the staff so they know how to properly implement them. And I'm going to just kind of pick up some of the, some of the steam here to quickly go over things on the rest of this. But if you want to ask more questions, please do. Fee schedule changes, update annually, the Board of County Commissioners updates the fee schedule. We're focusing in more on interdepartmental communication and coordination. So that's why that has ended up on that particular item. Building plan review and retention process. We're looking at ways we, we've changed how we review the plans. And also Megan is constantly looking at the retention. So how that has resulted in is we are now accepting electronic plan reviews. So we're reducing the paper that's coming in. We're also creating a way in which the plan review can be done electronically and then it goes back out electronically. So there is a reduction in the paper that's here in terms of what we're handling, but also the paper then that gets passed on to, Megan does everything. Eventually, things end up in laser fish. So looking at those things there.
Excuse me. By electronic, you mean that people can, can now or soon submit plans electronically? Oh, that's great.
Yes, yes. So we had a few people expressing interest. I will say that we're, we have explored how to get it done. We're, there's a few, few issues still to be worked out, but we do have a few people who are taking advantage of it. Again, it's not something that is widely accepted by most of our customers because most customers still appreciate that one-on-one contact with the staff, whether it's having the opportunity to turn something in and ask a question. Or they just don't, maybe they don't have the means in terms of the software to review and accept. But there are larger firms that really do appreciate not having to drive down from Seattle. We appreciate not having to have bulky permit plans available. So it has some merits there.
Is there any central location for the building codes themselves? Because on, on my side of this, I've been an architect for 50 years. People get so confused on the codes.
So I agree because you can't Google them generally. And that's, I think, by design by the people who write and publish them. It's a moneymaker for them. So we always have a copy in the office that a person could come in and look at. Also, the prosecutor's office has a copy. But if you're asking like, is there, are they located somewhere in a library? Not necessarily so, but you, you could come look at them in our office. They're, they're not online.
Oh, the Bill I saw.
Yeah. Yeah, the building codes, yeah. So the big, thick books, no. And, anything else? Again, I've kind of touched on revamping our building inspection slips, and permit applications and handouts. Since 2016, we've done a complete overhaul of most of our applications. Our website has been reorganized a few times. We've just recently reorganized it again. You know, we put things out there and we think it's a great way to organize it. And people like Megan are very creative and find better ways for us to have a better public facing. So I appreciate that. One of the other things that we've recently done is a water purveyor. One of the other things that we've recently done is a water purveyor consent form. So what that means is the planning team and the environmental health team, we developed a tool about communication again between what we do and what a public water system does and how can we communicate when there is perhaps a deviation to the standard practice. And in this case, it's you have, I'm going to say about Boyesford Water, they have a service area. And for whatever reasons, they're not able to provide service to the customer. And so the customer would like to request a deviation in the form of like drilling a well. And so we have developed a form of communication in which we can give the customer the information that we're looking for. They can work with the water purveyor to get that form considered and approved and brought back to be part of our permit applications. And then the last one. I've also touched on Senate Bill 5290. That is the permit, excuse me, the bill that talks about streamlining and permit efficiencies and puts the opportunity out there for a task force to look at ways in which to help with efficiencies across the state for all entities doing permitting. So standardizing digital platforms. So when I was mentioning the software, there's a chance that the state might recommend a standardized platform for software that would be consistent across the state. If that were to happen, then I would want to make our investment into that as opposed into our new system. So when I was talking about, I don't know that it pencils out in terms of time and money. That's what I'm waiting for is to see what the outcome is there. So that is our process improvement. We also have looking forward, things that we're going to do for 2024. So we're going to discuss and improve ways to identify communication and permit reviews between the departments and the public. This particular one will always be there because there's always something to talk about. And so that will continue to be there. Something that has been started and we're going to continue to do is all of the septic records. They're currently in Laserfish, but they're not all there. But wouldn't that be nice? We have walls of folders of septic permits that are not yet scanned. But ideally, in a perfect world, when one of you were or a realtor were looking for a septic record, wouldn't it be great if you didn't have to call us because maybe you want that information at, you know, 9:00 PM at night? And you don't want to wait until we're open. So that's kind of one of our big goals. We'll also then wait to see, you know, with the 5220 and the commerce guidance for that, for that legislation. We've got the periodic update and the rural housing alternatives. So again, those last two things are things that you're going to be looking at, but we'll be going back to the staff and the team of process improvement about how we accomplish that. So that was our, probably more than you wanted to know about process improvement. Any questions or comments or things you want to know more about? So then this report was given to the commissioners yesterday and we'll be disseminating this out to other groups. But I had the opportunity today, and so I asked Mindy if we could share it with you guys. So thank you.
There's one other thing I wanted to share, but I did want to just reiterate what Lee had said. Whenever, you know, most of the stuff that we're talking about here, you guys don't see, right? Like, that's just not part of the work that you're doing as planning commission. But whenever we are bringing development code changes forward to you, we will vet them first through our process team, along with other vetting internally, because we know we could mess up some sort of process unintentionally by changing some rules. And so we always vet them ahead of time. So just be assured that we're not bringing you something that hasn't touched that group first.
And one thing that I always found maddening as a staff person is when a ordinance was passed. And then I was told that the ordinance was passed and nobody had put any thought into what needed to happen to make it a success. Is there a form? Do we need to update things? You know, what steps need to be taken in order to be successful for this code? And so that's, that's what we say when we're bringing it to the process team along the way. It's like, what does it take to be successful with this thing?
So I just have one last thing for good of the order. If Megan will pull it up. So we do quarterly reports with you guys. These are just the building permits. And so this is just the year end report. So this first one is the past, this past five years of data. So the yellow line is last year and the others are the years before that. So you can see our numbers are slightly down this year from the past couple of years. They're more in par with the 2020 timeframe, but all very consistent. So our permit numbers are very, very consistent across the board. And then the next one is a breakdown of just the 2023 building permits. You as, as we've done before, you guys have seen these numbers before, but it's just, just the year interview. So as always, single family residentials are our biggest miscellaneous is of course big, but it's just kind of all sorts of things. Yeah. So that's just our breakdown of what's gone on in the past year in terms of building permits. Any questions about that?
I have a question. Can you hear me?
Who is this?
A member of the public.
Oh. Okay. I will catch him in just a minute. Okay.
Could we go back to, I'm sorry, let's go back to the process improvement report because even though I said it, Lori and I forgot to check back into the original question.
I was waiting 90.
Lori, what was your question again? And did I answer it? So?
Well, when you use the, when you, you know, show us the numbers like you just showed us of how many per year were processed and whatnot. Well, I was just wondering how you, you know, measure whether your improvements are actually improving or or not improving.
So in terms of the numbers that Mindy was showing for permitting review, we try to set, and they are a bit arbitrary, but it's what we feel is manageable and what we think we have the resources and what seems reasonable in terms of customer service. So planning reviews, MSRs, we feel a week to two weeks is appropriate time for intake at the permit center, routing it to the planner and the planner amongst whatever is on their dashboard, getting a decision out. So we try to set two weeks to get through the planning review process. That doesn't take into consideration if it's on pending or we're asking for more information. That's ideally, something comes in, it comes in, we issue it. Once that planning review is issued, then a person can apply for a septic permit or a building permit. I can't speak to how long a septic permit might take or what their particular goals are because that's a different division. But the building department, they're comfortable at about three to four weeks. So they feel like by the time an application comes in for some type of structure, three to four weeks is a reasonable time period. So you're coming in, we typically take it as you come in, you know, first in, first out, if you will. And so we try to set those goals for ourselves. So how do we monitor that by whether or not we're meeting those goals? So, you know, the permit center will be looking at, and everybody's work gets put on a dashboard. So we know, so for example, I'm going to say Angela Strauss is our planner. So we know when a permit came in, an MSR came in, we know when it came in and we know how long it's been on her dashboard. And so we try to self-regulate. The permit center feels a sense of responsibility because they're the folks that are talking to the customer. Frank comes in and says, how long it's, how long is it going to take me to get a permit? Permit Center will go to the dashboard and say, well, it looks like they're about four weeks out. And they're making that decision based on what they see coming in and maybe what the last thing was that was issued. So that's kind of how we monitor. It's not a hard set number. It's difficult because of fluctuating. We are a small staff. We have fluctuating conditions. And so we've just kind of set those numbers for ourself because that seems reasonable. And for the most part, seems to meet what our customers' expectations are. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. And then other land use decisions are tied into the timeline, the tables from Title 17.
You don't have a office manager right now, do you?
We do.
Oh, you do. Okay.
But I don't, the office manager may be different than what you think of for an office manager. So our office manager is more of a fiscal person, so somebody who monitors our budgets. Who that person does, the permit center staff does report to them, but they are more administrative. They are not necessarily a technical person. So the technical side of permitting would be like Doyle Sanford is the building official. So he's going to be monitoring the performance and how things are flowing on the building side of things. Brad Clark is the lead permit tech. So he's going to be watching kind of how things flow through the permit center and handling those issues. And then I, we had a planning manager before I started. That is a position that was cut and has not been filled. So I tend to monitor or facilitate the planning issues.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. All right. Any other questions for staff before we move on to good of the order for the planning commissioners? Okay, seeing nothing. Oh, I will go ahead and let Joe ask his question. Mr. Notch, did you have a question or a comment? Normally this would be done during public comment, but you were running a little bit late. So we'll open it up for you, sir.
Thank you. My question is, are those permits countywide or are those numbers excluding cities that do their own permitting?
Yeah, that's a great question. So that is, those are the countywide permits. So we do not do the, we do not include the cities. We don't do permitting for the cities except for under special circumstances. So that is the countywide unincorporated permitting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Notch. Okay. Well, thank you. All right, we will go ahead then and move on to good of the order for the planning commissioners. I'll start online with Gretchen. My seatmate.
Are you just asking if I have good of the order, Frank?
All right. I'm sorry?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, Corbin.
Nothing for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Sorry. It's hard to say my last name is a first name. All right, let's see, let me start down here with Lori. Nothing? Okay. Okay, Jeff? Okay, Bob?
I had a, thank you. Good meeting. I had a couple of calls this week and talked to different constituents of Lewis County. And they were both dealing with critical areas. People that had questions that heard through the grapevine that I had a wetland certificate or something and somehow they called me. But it, but it brought up a question that it's really, I'm going to get to this Lee's question. So the county is my understanding, and this is a little bit of speech, if you can correct it, was mandated by the state a long time ago, 20 years ago, to take care of their own critical areas. And so the county had to put in plans and, and I've said it before and I'll say it since. I've been with them 15 years and they've done a great job. The systems and lean have, have process flows good with the county. That's not where my problem is. As a wetland scientist, I've had to turn in reports. And what I realize is that trickle down has taken a long time to happen from the state to the county. But it has not happened to some of these communities that are growing really fast and are making decisions on critical areas that quite frankly, they're not qualified to make. And I'm just wondering, is a county, do I have to sit here and watch this happen? Or can you make, can the county pull this back? Could we even meet somewhere in between and review things that happen from other places? Okay, that's enough of my speech. You know, you know right where I'm at.
Well, I want to, and I want to make sure that you and I are speaking the same thing. So I think I hear your concern that critic, everybody has to do critical areas. In fact, you guys are going to do a critical areas update sometime in the future. So you'll get to dive really deep into this and some of you have already been through a critical areas ordinance update. So growth management brought to us the mandate to do a critical areas ordinance and to have critical area regulations. That's where you're, you were going, right? So that means you have to have a sense of, a little bit of sense of science and a little bit of familiarity with what the law has said, what growth management has said these things are. You have to be able to incorporate it into your code and then you have to be able to interpret it to make the call through it, like in our case, through a master site review, that you have a critical areas on your property and there is an assessment that is due. And then somebody like Bob turns in that work and you review it, it's either yes or no. And then you, if it's yes, you've met the conditions of the code, then you move on to development. And I think where Bob is going is this. We have staff who are trained to do this. It's something we do every day. But I believe that there are probably some smaller jurisdictions that occasionally they do this. And occasionally they're asked to review a critical areas or provide a sense of review. And that is challenging. And I think, is this where you're going? That it's not consistent? And I don't know if the, the concern is that it's not consistent or that it's completely overlooked. And in the case of a city jurisdiction, we have, the county has no authority to tell them, do what you want to do. But there are, there could be consequences. There could be lawsuits. There could be somebody who doesn't agree that this was overlooked. And so it's a liability that the city assumes. Is that where you were going? Kind of?
For my colleagues, when you go down and you probably have done this, I know all of you people have, and this is for the, this is for the speech. When you pull a permit with a county and you go down there and you give them a tax parcel number, they pull up all the layers. And they'll show you with this MSR that was never around 15 years ago, all the things you need to look at to build a house. It's really a nice system. And they hit critical areas and they turn the computer so you can see it. And they say, there's your property and there's the wetland that we have mapped and there's the stream we have mapped. You need to sort that out. And that's, there are no secrets. You and I can do that. We can get online in our own properties and do that. But I'm telling you that the communities that are around here, some of them are not doing that and they're not doing it well. And there's critical areas, which I give a shit about, and I'm sure you do too, that are being impacted. And it's due to the fact that they don't have the training. And I just sit here and think, well, they're in our county, you know, at some point, it's the, it's the law and we watch them break it. You can drive up Napavine Road to Napavine. There's one, there's one, there's one. I'll point them out to you.
So, yeah, I, I.
So I just, my question is, are you saying?
Can we do something?
Nothing we can do about it?
So.
Cities.
We don't, we don't have the authority over them, but a few things I wanted to clarify. So the cities do have to comply with critical areas. It is one of part of their mandatory elements. They do have to update their critical areas ordinance this year. You know, this periodic update cycle, all the cities have to do that as well. One of the things that's been allowed for them, which they can choose, the smaller jurisdictions can choose, is they can rely on ours. So they can rely on our mapping and our critical areas ordinance. I don't know if the cities will, will take that option, but they certainly could. We, we do have robust mapping that's available online, which is really useful. We can't make them do that. It's a choice that they can make. So those are two, I guess, those are two opportunities where the public can weigh in. Because as they do their critical areas ordinance update, that'll trigger a SEPA because it's a non-project action. So there will be an opportunity to weigh in. And then as Lee said, the only other way I see that community members have a say when they think that things are not being done per the law is lawsuit, which is a liability for the small cities if they're not following, yeah, if they're not following state law. But we really don't have, we don't have authority within those jurisdictions.
And I don't by any means mean to be belittling or putting down our communities because I know that sometimes it's just a clerk who's doing that work. And this is not, the work that Preston and Angela and Mindy and Karen do is not easy. It's not easy at all. And it does take building the muscle and the knowledge. And so it's hard to watch the struggles that go on on both sides. And so I can, I feel, and I've experienced.
This is only, this is only for my commissioners. Do you guys already know this? But the fact that you go to a community around here with a wetland report and instead of them calling their friends at the county and saying, hey, would you take a look at this and see what you think about it? They don't call the county. They have no interest in calling the county. They call the state. And the state comes down and has a look at it. So then you deal with the state. My only issue is I spend 10 years being taught by you guys, learn how to work with you. And then now I got to deal with, with a city who you talk about, she just said they have to rewrite their code. I was. I was told I had to redo a report and I go to look at the city's ordinance and it was from two thousand and eight, a wetland report. So they're grading on my report and they don't have any ordinances that are to code. It was the stupidest thing you did. So anyway, now when you drive down Jackson Highway, it's not just Napavine. You see people mowing right up next to a type F stream, Dillon Bar. And then somebody tells me today that they just saw all these fish on Dillon Bar, right? And so it's frustrating. It's my little passion, my salmon passion. You'll hear more about it this year. Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, Bob. What I was, um, going to say, Mindy, thank you for, um, you know, mentioning though, that you guys are available to these smaller jurisdictions. Um, I wonder if maybe, um, an educational opportunity exists to reach out to these different groups, have them come together. You know, and, uh, and, 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 you know, make your offer of crystal clear that
Yeah, so
you can do that.
Yeah, no, we, so we do. So the plan growth committee meets, uh, monthly. We meet next week. So plan growth committee is the mayor or their designee of each jurisdiction. And the chair of the Board of County Commissioners, Lee and I are staff on it. And they are, they're in, they're intended to coordinate on planning issues. So we are in, of course, the throes of coordinating on comprehensive plan periodic date. We, the county leads those and we are trying really hard to be as helpful as possible. So the current step that we're at and we'll be talking about next week with them is existing conditions reports. Because as Lee said, they don't have staff that can do the work. They also don't receive as much funding as we do from the state to hire consultants. So it's very hard for them even to get good expertise in to assist. So we're going to be talking with them next week about how we can help them with their existing conditions reports. And, and they are aware of the critical areas ordinance piece. They are aware that they can adopt our component of it. We will continue to coach and educate as we go. As Lee said, and as I've said to the smaller jurisdictions multiple times is this, the work that we do is extremely hard for people who are trained to do it and their, their staff are not. And so we want to make ourselves as available as we can to help them through this because this is a big, tough update uh, that we're going through. So, yep. And the plan growth committee meeting is completely open to the public. They're the third Wednesday of the month at one P M. We meet downstairs in the lower, um, level room. Open to the public. We do good meeting notes. So if you ever want the meeting notes from those, feel free to, we can pass those on too.
Yeah, I add a little bit here. Uh, one simple thing we could do, or perhaps, is to, um, better coordinate the mapping services. The overlays, um, politely put, don't match and are very inaccurate. Some are very old. And it, it starts off bad and just gets worse trying to get through the process. And it starts right there.
Yeah. So we, uh, we are updating, Public Works can, um, is the manager of our G I S data. We don't manage the city's G I S data, although they can choose to use our data for critical areas. Most of, uh, like our critical areas data mostly comes from outside sources because we don't have, um, specific expertise. So we're relying heavily on uh, state or in some cases federal data. And then there's a process to correct as people go through. So Bob is very familiar with the wetland delineation process to correct the data when we don't, um, when someone sees that it is not correct on the site. Through our critical areas ordinance, uh, update, we will have an opportunity to pull a new best available science. So that will be an opportunity to update mapping to whatever the best is that's out there. Um, and also make some strategic questions, which we will bring back to you as we move into that. That's going to be a year or two body of work, the critical areas ordinance update. Uh, I, when I say you guys have a lot coming at you in the next two years, I am not joking. There is a lot coming at you.
Hey, Mindy, on that, when you were talking about, uh, everybody's, uh, terms or somehow we were talking about it, I got to thinking about all this stuff we're doing. Do all of us, uh, do our terms? Is, do we all stay on here while we work through? Cause you're gonna
You do. We don't lose anybody. I don't believe there's anybody who cycles out of terms
Until
over the next, we can double, Megan can double check on, she knows who those are.
That'd be a waste.
It would be. And so, uh, actually last week when we were talking about reappointments, Commissioner Brummer made a statement that I think is really important, and that is about consistency. And knowing how much work and how technical the work is that we do, um, how important it is to maintain consistency, particularly during big updates like this. So my plea is, don't you guys dare leave me.
Well, when I had to reapply, you know, um, it was, you know, I thought, well, if they're really going to consider a newbie over somebody now who's got five, five years experience on the planning commission. You know, I mean, you know, God bless them, but you know, there's a huge learning curve. I mean, it takes you know, a long time to, to really get up to speed. I mean, you know, if you're not a scientist or, you know, uh, a fifty-year, you know, or a builder or whatever, it, it stuff, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a huge, you know, huge undertaking. And so, but anyway, I, great discussion. Bob, thanks for bringing this up. Uh, and, and staff, you've done an outstanding job as always, explaining things to us. Bob, go ahead.
The, um, the point you make about turnover is an interesting one. And I, I've, I haven't been on the board as long as some of you, but I think the most interesting, excuse me, and valuable part is the work that they've done about getting such diverse people on, on the board. And so I'd be a little leery of, hey, there's a new person that wants to come on and then find us all sitting here thinking the same way. Because I, uh, I got to drive through Packwood last week and I stopped for a cup of coffee and got to see Gretchen and and part of that was to say that she and I had disagreed on something. We were talking about something and I wanted her to make, make certain that we don't want to be disagreeable. We just want to disagree. It's okay to disagree and we're all diverse and and her interests on the east end are different than mine here. And, uh, so anyway, it's a nice group if, but if you do have a replacement for me, I'll let them have my seat if they need them.
No, and I would encourage you guys to challenge each other. Poke, we as a staff poke holes in all the ideas. And that's, you know, I think it produces a better product. So
It can be hard sometimes though, because we can't really talk to each other that much. I mean, you know, if, if we were to say the same thing to three people, you know, we're, you know, we're going to jail. And, you know, I would love to be able to have a sit down, you know, but I'm afraid that I might accidentally tell one or two other people and, you know, it, it, you know, it would disqualify, disqualify all of us. So.
No, I know. It is really challenging because you can't create a quorum. I know that's really hard. We have said in the past, we said at the training, unfortunately, it was prior to you coming on, Jeff, but, um, it is perfectly fine for, for two people on the commission to get together and talk about an issue. You can't create a serial meeting where you meet with one person and then meet with another person and meet with another person. That's a serial meeting. That is a quorum. But, um, you know, if, if you and another person are really not seeing eye to eye on something and you would like to have coffee together and talk through it, you can, as long as it's not a quasi judicial action. And again, we make sure you guys know when those are coming and what you can't talk about. Um, any of this stuff that we're doing for the next couple of years, for the most part, it's legislative. So yeah, if you find like, boy, we're butting, we're butting heads, we're not, please feel free to have coffee. What I would only ask in that is, um, bring it back to the group, not like the whole conversation, but come back to the group and say, hey, Frank and I sat down and had coffee. We talked about this particular issue. This was my takeaway. Frank, what was your takeaway? Just an opportunity that the rest of the commission doesn't feel that they're completely left out of the conversation. But you certainly, you certainly can do that. Um, and I know it is, it is frustrating. Thankfully you guys are seven. You don't have our Board of County Commissioner problem where they literally can't speak to each other because two creates a quorum. You guys have a little bit more leeway. So that's good.
No, I've appreciated the fact, being on this board, it's one of the most fulfilling experiences I've had in the things that I do in the county. Uh, is that, you know, Bob and I can disagree on something or Lori and I could disagree on something, you know, but, you know, hey, that's, that's, that's that. When the decision's made, you know, we, we move on from there and we're off to the next circus, you know, and so it's, uh, you know, it's been a great experience and I appreciate working with all of you. And I appreciate the confidence that you've given me in electing me as chair. I will certainly serve to the very best that I can. And if I step on anybody's toes, my apologies in advance, but always open for suggestions and, um, crit, critique. Uh, I'm a, I'm a very open person. So okay, that, uh, seems to, um, uh, conclude our, um, good of the order. So, um, the next planning commission meeting will be January twenty-third and the agenda items will be the workshop on the rural housing alternative. Staff, are there any other items for that meeting that you wanted to talk to us about?
Not that I am aware of at this time.
Are there any commissioners that will not be present at that meeting that you can foresee at this point? I checked my calendar. I should be here. Gretchen, Corbin? Okay. All right. Looks like we're good. All right. If there's no further business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
We are adjourned. Thank you.